Hey, I'd like to call this joint meeting the order of the select board at eight o'clock on Thursday, October 30.
I'd like to call this meeting the order of the Woodstock Village Board of Trustees at eight AM on the third. First item on our agenda is additions and deletions from the posted agenda. Are there any additions or deletions?
Everything.
Trustees, do you have anything? Okay, then the next item on the agenda is a vote for the trustees. We need to change the date of our November meeting because it is on the 11th and that is Veterans Day. So I think we were looking at either the, we want to keep it that week. It needs to be either the 10th or the 13th. Yeah. So.
Either one of those would be for me.
I would prefer the 13th, but that's just mine.
13th would work for me.
Can you do the, what, no, the 13th is Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, she can't do the, she can never do Thursday.
Do we have that? I noticed, yeah.
Okay, Lisa, can you do Thurs- or the 10th?
The 10th?
Yeah.
Yeah, what time?
You know, six thirty in the normal time?
Yeah, yeah, or if you needed to be, if you need to change the time.
Earlier would be better for me, but whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I can do earlier, certainly.
I can do earlier.
Yeah.
I can do earlier.
Do six.
Do six?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I guess I need to make a motion for that. I'm making a motion to move our regularly scheduled November 11th meeting to November 10th at clock. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda, thank you, is a discussion about the village conservancy. Eric, alternative with you?
Yes, I think they came in front of both boards maybe a year ago now. And they've been doing some work in the background, or not in the background, but kind of fleshing out their ideas. And what I wanted today was kind of just a more robust conversation between both boards. I think in the past, we've had a script where volunteers have done a lot of work. And they come to the boards at the last second or last minute and the board feel kind of like trapped on what to do. So we want to have kind of a large conversation about if the boards are okay with this sort of system. How to structure it, and then if so, kind of how you want that relationship to work. So we're all on the same page, so they can go do their work they want to do. They have the support energy of both boards and we're all kind of working in harmony together rather than just two separate silos. So we put together a bunch of questions, kind of gathered a conversation within those questions to the university a few days ago, prep them. But those questions by no means are, only will cover, and just kind of want a, a, a large conversation about everything. So that point I'll turn over to the chairs.
Okay, so I think if you're okay with it, I, we provided you the questions.
Yep.
So I think we've, we've all are pretty familiar with what you want to do in general and sort of the general ideas. So do you want to just jump into these questions?
Sure, um, do you want to go through them one by one, or I'm, I'm interested in knowing if you had a chance to look at the presentation, which covers a lot of this round, but we can do it however you'd like.
Actually, go through the questions.
Yeah, I can just go for the questions, yeah. And give us your name, just because.
Oh, yeah, okay, so I'm Wendy Spector, the team leader for the Woodstock Village Conservancy. And I'm, I have a number of our team members here, Stuart Matthews, you know a lot of you guys, Joey, Natalie, Scott Smith, Betty, and. That's it, yeah. So we have several other members who aren't here today, so we really appreciate the time that you're taking to talk to us about this. As Eric said, what we are hoping to do is come away with a letter of agreement that basically gives us permission to go out and talk to the public in a more public way. So far, our conversations have been very restricted to private groups or small events. And we don't want to go forward unless we have your full support. So, um, yeah, so hopefully what we'll do today is, is kind of talk about that letter of agreement and tell you where we're at in our, in our process and the things that we would like your specific approval on. But I'm having to go through the questions here. So.
So if I could just, I think it's best if the board kind of dictates the flow of the conversation.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I mean, I think we can just go through one by one. So the first question we had is, uh, what are you?
What is the purpose of the question about?
Yeah, it's like, I'm just trying to kind of think behind the question.
Yeah. You wanted to jump over that one? So what is the, what do you think the relationship is, or what is your anticipated relationship between the, both of the boards, municipal staff, and the conservants?
Okay, so ideally, we would work with the head of the DPW, who is the most directly responsible for the public spaces that we would be interested in influencing. And I imagine that Eric would be involved in many of these discussions as well. So how, how I see, how we sort of see the relationship going is that we would provide a lot of the legwork, you know, this, the, the basic research. Information gathering, communications with public, et cetera, with guidance from the DVW and the town manager as to priorities. We're very aware of the town's goals for sustainability, you know, economic development, that kind of thing. And that, that's where we align. So we want to definitely do things that you would like to have checked off. We also have our own passion projects and things that individuals are interested in pursuing that are also in alignment, but we wouldn't do any of those things without the. Involvement of DPW and town manager.
Of course, what, what, when you say involvement, time-wise, what are you looking for involvement of the staff?
Yeah, I, to a large degree, it's dictated by how much time is available. So we are willing to do much of the work. And sort of present ideas and progress to, to them. And if they want to get more involved, you know, we're happy to have them be more involved. So it's a, it's a balance of wanting to make significant progress with however much time there is on the municipality side.
I guess, just trying to be a little bit more specific, if, if your plan is the planting of trees, you would envision town staff doing the planting rather than the conservancy hiring the staff to do that.
Right, well, that is a matter of also sort of legal liability. So the conservancy for public land would not en- enter into any contracts at all. We, we discussed this with Eric already and decided that the best course of action would be for the town to engage in any contract work. And they would assume responsibility for that work. We would help them by doing, again, the legwork, you know, finding contractors, perhaps drafting RFPs. The municipality would be the signatory on any contract, so you'd have, you know, full authority to reject or edit or whatever you chose to do. But it, it takes the burden off the staff from doing all of the preparatory work.
Yeah, I have a question. Where does it fit in with the two boards? Specifically, you're talking about working with Eric and DPW and doing projects, but where beforehand does the agreement come in that we think that's a good idea? We don't think it's a good idea.
Totally, yes. So, as I mentioned, in working with the DVW and with the town manager, we would rely on them to sort of dictate when you would step in and make decisions. I mean, you have your own internal relationship and presumably you have given the town manager a certain authority to make certain kinds of decisions. So we would rely on him to tell us when those decisions need to be presented before you and discussed. It wouldn't be our decision.
Okay, thank you.
One, just comment, and I'm sure you've heard this from Eric, and if you've watched us going through these goals of, we've got so much to do. I, and this is just more of a, an expectation setting thing. While I would love for things to work smoothly, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on parking soon, and we started on that in February. Right, so I just want to set expectations that like, sometimes there's going to be floods, sometimes there's going to be whatever. And I want to make sure that we have the ability, whether it's with the boards or with Eric or with DPW staff, to go. We have to hold on this project for three months because we just had flooding, or there's a whatever. Because I think, you know, again, Eric will do, he'll be our referee, he'll be the person sort of guiding things. But I want to make sure as we're, as we're going through the joint goals, our own goals, what the staff needs to do, that it, that there is an understanding of like, there's only so much time. And that, that has to be respected and balanced all the way around.
Yes.
Because it gets, it gets messy and I, and I would hate for you guys to get frustrated and say, this hasn't, like, we're all doing our best.
Well, I mean, this is an example.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And so I, yeah, and I like, and I love the ideas and it's just like, I don't want people to get frustrated, you know, it's normal, of course, to say, well, the town's doing this or the conservancy's doing this, like, we're all doing our best. And, and sometimes we, we're just gonna say, the, the sewer plant has to come first and that's all they have time for right now. Yeah.
Laura has a question.
Oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead, Laura.
Thanks. I just want to say thanks Wendy and the rest of the members of the conservancy for putting time and effort into this over the past year. I think it's a testament to Woodstock's volunteerism and spirit of. I would say that my concern is, you know, how this board is currently set up. They're not appointed by us currently, which is unlike, uh, the boards that we oversee, with the exception, I think, of the East End group. And so I don't know if, if the boards want to talk about if it is more appropriate for us to appoint these members to the board, if they're going to be advisory and doing work, not on behalf of the town, but at least in that way. Or if we, you know, like, have a different distinction because they are not appointed by the town. That's just something I wanted to flag.
Do you want me to respond, or is that for you guys?
Um, I think that's, I mean, yeah, do you have a response on that?
Yeah, so the East End Park is sort of a model that we're following. And the other point that I want to make is that this kind of public private partnership is something that has evolved in many cities around the country. And one of the reasons is because of the private part. Like, I don't know that there is an appointed commission that goes out and raises money, for example. You know, we are, we consider ourselves a philanthropic organization. And so our goal is to raise private money, grant foundation money as well, to support these goals, but in partnership with the municipality. So that, that would be my, my only concern, is that if we were an appointed board, I don't know if, what the rules are about them going out and raising the private money.
Well, yeah, you would have a lot more rules if you weren't appointed board, and I think the freedom you have to do what you're doing is appropriate. What, what I don't want to see is what they did at the East End Park, is they just started planting things.
Yeah, I understand.
And now.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say that the East End model is not something we're looking to replicate as a town.
Correct. And I, and we understand that that's one of the reasons why we're going through this process, because we're trying to avoid some of the mistakes that have happened in the past with organizations and trying to kind of. Be more aligned with how you want to do things. And so the way we're kind of envisioning things is that nothing would be decided, nothing would be decided or acted upon without your approval. And again, it's a balancing act of, to Seaton's point, how much time you have, it's a balancing act of how much information you want, when you get that information, what the response time is. And, and, and then achieving, you know, the mutual goals. So we understand that that is one of the sort of challenges that maybe we'll all have to work through.
Can I ask one follow-up?
Yeah.
How receptive would you be to the boards giving projects to the conservancy to work on? You know, and then maybe making it over the trustees, looking at parking meters going forward, whether we should, you know, parking meters, move away from parking meters, kiosks, that'll obviously impact how the village looks. You know, some of what the select board did with the finance committee was say, hey, we didn't do water rates, we don't have time, you go do water rates. And they came back with a much more than they asked for, but like a more robust system. So would you be interested in something like that, or do you want, just on the project that you presented, the board's get approval of an island forward?
You know, um, I think we had a meeting, Eric, where we said, what are, what are some of the ideas that you all have? So we're totally receptive to your thoughts. And one of the beauties, I think, about the conservancy is the membership, all the people on the leadership team came together because everybody had their own little project. And we're providing kind of a home for that and a process that I think is important to, to understand because we're all connected. Everything is related to each other, so whether it's parking meters or whatever, those are all related to how we think about wayfinding and traffic flow and sidewalks and all those things. So, yeah, we would definitely be happy to get that list of wants. Now, I can't promise that we would address them, you know, part of it is, is there someone willing to work on this? And there's a lot that could be worked on in this village. So one of the things that I think we'll end up doing is creating kind of a laundry list, if you will, and creating a, a long-term plan with some short-term goals that kind of chip away at each of these items as it, as it makes sense. So the more we get on that list, the better we have, understanding we'll have about all the different things, how they interact, and what's the best way to address each or, or groups of them that make sense.
Okay, let's keep going. Eight sixteen, we've got, try to get it through as many of these, and I'll make sure that we get any citizen comments as well. So this sort of follows in line with that, so I'm going to squish some of these together. But how will, how will your group make decisions and timelines and, and those sorts of things? What is your, sort of, walk us through your process? So you have lots of ideas, we have lots of ideas, the community's going to have lots of things. So what is, can you sort of, for the next five years, say, we're gonna focus on one project, and then we're gonna take that and take it to Eric? And then you anticipate it going before the boards, and then you anticipate a community outage, but, so have you sort of thought about that, what that's gonna be like?
So we've only been in existence for a year, and so we're a little baby group.
Yeah.
But we, Stuart and I just had a conversation about this actually the other day. We're, our, our team kind of has been loosely, you know, working together on lots of different ideas. And we, you know, went out to stakeholders and defined the priority as being the green and the, the traffic around the green. But we also are looking at what we call mini projects, which are things that can be achieved, kind of like with less of all of that rigmarole and, you know, more quickly, costless money, et cetera. And the way, one of the ways that I'm thinking about things, and we haven't discussed this as a leadership team, but we plan to do that in January. Is to come up with this laundry list and think about how we're gonna fundraise and all, and clump things together. So what may end up happening is that we kind of develop annual goals. And that will become, like many philanthropic groups, our annual appeal. And in each year, we would have those priorities that would chip away at this list. But then we might have a capital campaign for a major project. In this case, our, our project is likely to be the green. So that will be kind of once in a decade type of thing. And that is a longer term process, many phases potentially, more money raised. But at the same time, we might have these annual goals where we start making small improvements to the village, like planting the trees.
So I, I just want to back up a little bit on the process. One of the first, one of the agreements that have been floating around talked about doing studies, and I'm just wondering where you are and how much public input you're going to get before you start defining these projects.
Yeah, so each project is going to have its own requirements as far as how much study is required. The study that we asked for already is the, by Penn audit that we didn't get unfortunately to the trans grant for. But that was supposed to be sort of one of the initial steps in getting, addressing the issues of safety on the village corridor. We're still interested in doing that. We might have to raise the money since we didn't get the grant. But that requires sort of many years of study in order to feed into a, a, a final outcome, especially because it involves Vtrans. Other things like the trees, it's a little more straightforward. So, you know, this research, the study might just involve talking to the tree warden and getting his input on what kind of trees are, are required. And then, you know, talking to the landscapers to understand the cost, that kind of thing.
And I think what I'm, sorry, but I think what I'm talking about is, before you get to your plans and your designs, actually asking people in the town if that's something that they want.
Right, well, it's a, it's an iterative process, isn't it? So we come up with an idea, and before we can even go to the town and ask for their feedback, we want to have a certain amount of information so they can understand what we're, we're talking about. It's sort of like, you know, you have a document and you make a draft so that everybody can respond to it. It's harder for people to respond to kind of a incoherent idea. So in, in, with respect to the green, which is a larger, more complex process, we first went to the stakeholders, talked to them about their interests and their priorities. And that's how we landed on that as a project idea. And then we had a brainstorming group with those primary stakeholders, with a landscape architect who came up with several concepts. Then we went back and discussed those concepts, identified key elements, and then went back and created one plan that we intend to share with the public. So again, we feel like it's important to do a certain amount of research so that when we go to the public for their feedback, we have, you know, a certain level of preparation and information that we can give them to respond to. So what we're kind of waiting for from you all is this sort of letter of support so that we can take that plan, which is still in our minds, a concept. And there's a sort of back-of-the-envelope pricing associated with it. But going to the public, we want to pull some charrettes, you know, where we go, we have various times that you all are doing with these coffee clashes. To give the public an opportunity to respond to them, give, give us their feedback. And then we would develop a final plan that incorporates the public feedback. And that would be what we would then go out and get a RFP costing for, and that would set the budget for fundraising. So we've done a kind of back-of-the-envelope thing, just so that we understand the scope of the project. And so that's the kind of research we feel is, is reasonable and appropriate before we go to the public. But it's just the beginning of the public conversation in our minds. Is that, is that clear?
Um, yeah, I'm not sure I agree, but it's clear.
Can I just add one thing? One of the things I think we're sensitive.
Can you give us your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Stuart Matthews. One of the things that we're sensitive about is going into the public until we're sure that we have your support for something. So we're trying to do work in order to see if it's viable, then we need to come back to you to make sure that you're comfortable with what we're doing, before we go to the public and say, this is something that we.
So if I could, I think it's something to talk about when we get into structure of how you want this to be structured, whether you want them to come to you first, and then public engagement, and then, or if you want them to do public engagement first, then come to you. But coming apart and flesh out how the process could look and look.
Um, let's keep going. So I'm gonna mix a couple more of the. How often do you think updates are going to be given to us, to the municipality, to Eric, to the public, the different stakeholders? And can you also sort of add in, when you, you keep talking about stakeholders, who are, who are those people or groups or organizations?
Well, so stakeholders are you all, of course, and then we've spoken to the schools, the regional commission, other nonprofits that have any interest in public spaces. So that would be like the recreation department, which manages Vale Field, Friends of East End Park, Friends of Faulkner Park, as well as the National Parks, Billings Farm, Tom, so, I mean, everybody kind of in town. All the entities that are interested in access and public spaces. And in terms of like, how often we would report back to you, so basically when we, when there's progress made, we would report back. In, up to now, I've been doing periodic updates to our stakeholders. Again, anybody who's expressed interest or who's seen the presentation, or were, were on our, on our mailing list of, of updates. And so the last update was back in May after the select board meeting where you all said you agreed in with the conservancy's in principle activity. So we sent an update out to our mailing list saying that we, you know, have the approval, now we're working on an MOU, and, you know, this is what we're planning to do. So we have not sent an update since then because we're waiting for this meeting to happen. And, but that's the kind of, that, that's the timing it would be. If, if you wanted more frequent updates, you know, that could happen, it could be, you know, like this week, this is what happened, or this, nothing happened this week, or whatever it is. It kind of, again, has to do with your appetite for information.
And would you, sort of going back to Susan's comment, Laura's comment earlier, about this is sort of a newer thing for us, that it's not an appointed board? And so this is all sort of a new concept. Would you be open to having somebody from one of the boards as sort of, as part of your committee or as a, as you have something like that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Can you talk about if the municipality and the taxpayers are going to need to provide any funding, whether it's upfront or maintenance, or how are you playing on structuring that? Or, you know, and that would include, you know, every March when people say, you know, we want this amount of money for the library or the rec center, do you anticipate putting in for those sorts of things?
Right, right, yeah, so our, our pitch has always been at minimal or no additional cost to the town budget. So that would, that remains, you all have a certain amount that you set aside to mow the lawn, blow the leaves, whatever it is that you do. So presumably that would continue, this is still part of your public responsibility. So what we're talking about is all of the work that we would provide would be funded through grants and donations. And that would be additional maintenance, it might be pruning, mulching. I don't, I don't know what to do, but this is the kind of conversation we'd have to have with the head of DVW, because we, you know, we, we did talk to Chris early on, but didn't get a clear answer about how much money goes into maintenance. Because it's like, we're buried in the whole budget. But the idea is that we would not ask the taxpayers for, for, for more money, and we would not do a petition in the, in the spring.
Hope you planted the trees, you'd have a maintenance program for them.
Correct.
What, uh, does the conservancy speak for the municipality in public events to funders, that sort of thing? So when you're having a, a public meeting, you're saying, this is, this is our plan for whatever, or you're going to a grant organization. You're going as your group and not the town, or would you, would you be looking for us to go with you or as a partner, or what is sort of, how do you anticipate?
Yes, so that depends also. So it, basically, we would go out and speak as the conservancy. The letter of support that we're seeking is to give us the confidence that we have, you know, general permission to do this. So that, that whoever is responding to our, our request knows that we're, we have the support of the town. In certain situations, like public grants, for example, it can't come from us, it has to come from the municipality. And in those cases, we would be, we would offer to do, again, the legwork, the paperwork, fill out the application, do the, you know, the, the data gathering that's required for that. The town would then read through that application, and they would be the signatories. In some cases, where, for example, a match is required, we, that we can apply for, and there might be a match that is required. We would ask for your approval or whatever it is to, to enable us to do that. So it kind of depends, if we're going to a donor, it wouldn't involve you at all. You know, we would just be making the pitch, here's our project, here's what you can donate to. There would be a, an understanding or a codicil in any kind of agreement, gift agreement that says that, you know, we're holding the money for this project. When the money is accumulated, when, and the project is ready to go, we would write a check to the town. And at which point, the town takes possession of that money and is responsible for dispersing it to the contracts, the contractors that you have signed with. And the, the donor would have in their codicil, if you will, you know, a statement that if the project doesn't happen, they can have the money back. Or whatever it is that we agree on with the municipality for that particular project. Oh, I just wanted to introduce Mike Green, who's also.
Hi, guys. How did you drop off, sorry, I was a little late.
Yeah, I got it, listen. So. You're, if you have maintenance funds in, that's best for the. You're, if you have maintenance funds in that's best for the town to maintain the pro- the, uh, let's say you plant the trees. Are you gonna have a private tree company maintain them and install them? Or are you expecting the town to maintain them?
So this would have to be a conversation we have with DPW. So the degree of which the town maintains the trees right now would be the sort of a baseline of the work that's done. Um, and we would just have to understand what that is. Um, there was a conversation the other day with, um, I don't remember, maybe it was the chamber about the watering um, and the baskets. Those are the kinds of things that we kind of envision we might take over at some point. And so um, that watering is above the, the, the budgeted amount of maintenance. So, you know, that would be something that we would assume responsibility for. Um, so if, we would have to understand what the town does now to understand what we need to do above and beyond that to, to make, um, make sure that our, our plantings are all well cared for. But yeah, maintenance is definitely part of what we see the uh, responsibility of the conservancy is.
Okay. Um, can you, as we're talking about this, it's always helpful for us to steal ideas from other people. So do you have any other examples of this sort of thing? I know very early on you, you talked about um, the Central Park Conservancy and I, I looked at that and I was like, okay, I mean, yeah. I mean, that's just overwhelming, but they seem to be very independent and it's a whole other thing and I was like, I don't even- But do you have any examples of how that's done where there is a partnership? They seem to be much more independent than New York just goes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but do you have examples of how that works in other towns where there's sort of an independent board? And then there's-
Yeah.
The legislative and-
I don't, I frankly not gone deeply into each organization.
Okay.
But um, I have observed that there are these kinds of organizations all over the place.
Okay.
And um, and I think because municipalities like ours have, over the years, um, deprioritized spending on parks. And so, um, you know, people in those areas have taken it upon themselves to develop these partnerships. Um, and I think it, each, the way that they interact with their respective municipalities is gonna depend on how those municipalities are run. So we have two boards and we have, you know, it's a, it's a complicated thing. Um, I, that I think, you know, I'm not sure how much we would learn from those. What really matters is how we relate to you all and how it fits into the way you like to run the um, operations in this town. So we're happy to um, you know, um, conform to whatever that expectation is.
Could you, if you would have some of those, could you share those with us? Just, I mean, even if, even just sending us links and say, here's the-
Yeah, Emerald Necklace Conservancy is one, which I like to use because they, their parts are along the Charles River in this kind of, you know, necklace formation. And I like to think that we have a similar kind of jewelry analogy in our village. Um, and then there's the um, the Prospect Park Alliance in Brooklyn. Um, I think they've been doing a lot of work down there. Um, those are the ones that kind of touch my-
Okay.
Um, so Lisa has her hand up.
Oh, okay.
This is also a member of the public, I don't know if you wanna wait till all your questions-
Yeah, let's, I just want to make sure to get-
All the boards' questions.
Yeah, okay.
Hi, um, I wanted to come back to maintenance and specifically long-term maintenance. It's one of the hardest ways to raise money because it's not pretty. Um, you don't have something in front of you. And currently, East End Park is trying to raise money for maintenance and is having difficulty. So my question would be, are you willing to put aside out of each grant or let the, or, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, put aside money out of each donation for long-term maintenance. I'm concerned that fifteen, twenty years down the line, we're gonna be stuck with all the maintenance. And I, I would like to hear, and you don't have to get back to me today, what your plan is for maintenance for the next, maintenance costs for the next hundred years or whenever. Um, because that's always a concern for me.
Okay, so there's, there's two ways of looking at this. First of all, we do have in our plan for the green, an endowment for maintenance. Um, but the other thing is that we're not proposing at this point to expand any of the property. Um, we're looking to uh, restore the property that exists already. So the green, for example, it's been maintained the way it's been maintained and the result has been deterioration of the health of the property. And so part, you know, the sexy part is bringing the green back up to standard, um, restoring the, the ground, raising the level, it's been compacted over decades, planting the trees, et cetera. So you still have the green and it still has to be maintained. So at minimum, we're improving the situation. And the main, even if we got no more maintenance, at least we're improving the situation and we're back to ground zero. One of the things that we are proposing is part of the restoration of the green is irrigation, which would probably go fifty percent uh, of the way without additional staff time to improve, to maintain the health of the, of the, of the lawn. Um, but we do plan to have um, maintenance built in, whether it's as an endowment or percentages, Lisa suggested. It is part of our um, our thinking about what we intend to do. Um, and then as far as like um, East End Park, I don't, I wouldn't, I say, think it's premature to say that they're having trouble raising money for their endowment. They've only just um, established a um, a um, endowment with the Vermont um, Community Fund. And um, so we have yet to see whether they have that problem. But one of the long-term visions of the conservancy is to actually consolidate the maintenance of all the public spaces so that each group doesn't have to um, independently and separately raise money for the uh, maintenance, but that we do it as a um, as a piece and that um, we share resources and, and basically have a more hopefully efficient um, management of all the public spaces.
Uh, thank you. Thanks for the correction about East End. I, I just know that um, adminis- and maintenance is a, a hard thing and I shouldn't jump ahead of East End to raise money. So um, I'm done with my questions, thank you.
Um.
I guess the, the big question is, how, how many phases of these projects have you identified?
So, uh, again, we have small projects and we have large projects. Um, the tree project that we're hoping you'll approve of today is really just one phase. Um, the first, the first being um, to raise enough money to plant four trees. Um, that it would be, one way to think about that, again, as I mentioned earlier, is to be part of uh, an annual um, plan. Each year, we would have uh, priorities for that year. And so maybe this year we put in the four as initial uh, effort and then we add two trees a year for a, a, a few years. So um, I don't know if that's what you think about as phasing, but that's one way we're looking at that project.
Four trees where?
Um, we've identified four locations and if you wanna get into the details-
No, 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 just on the downtown. Down downtown.
Yeah.
Essentially places, this is Stuart Matthews. Essentially, there's, we've identified four spots sort of in the center, right in the center on Central Street, where there were trees, they were cut. There's either studs, it comes in the ground, or there's, they've been patched over with asphalt.
Yeah.
Right. So there's gaps in the existing tree.
Yeah.
Um, and then the green is a more complex process, obviously. Um, and it depends on how much money we can raise. So, you know, in, in sort of like big chunks, you could say that there are four phases. There's the restoration of the green itself, then what we call um, the fence and furnishings. Um, and then there's the um, endowment for the maintenance and then there's the um, um, village quarter project outside. And the, the reason that those are phased in that order is, is partly because of the o- order of operations that would be required. Like we can't, first, you know, um, before we put the fence in, we've gotta raise the ground level to the appropriate height and, you know, that kind of thing. And also because we might wanna have design approval, public feedback about the fence, the style of the fence, whether we replace it or restore it. Um, so some of the phasing has to do with um, uh, the order of operations. Some of it has to do with how quickly we can raise the money. So within the restoration of the green, which is phase one, um, depending again on how much money we can raise, there would, there could be sep- separate phases. So half of the amount that we're estimating is hardscape, as an example. So maybe we just um, do the infrastructure first and we put in the irrigation, raise the level of the soil, um, reseed and um, and then um, you know, that's phase one. Phase two is put the trees in. Um, phase three is start working on hardscape. You know, so the, the phases are um, are flexible.
I will just say that those phases need to be reversed. You wanna do the hardscape, then you wanna do the trees, then you wanna do the irrigate.
Yeah, well, those are, that's, yeah, totally. The hard, the reason I say the hardscape later is because that's the most expensive part and it might take us time to raise the money to do the hardscape. Um, so that's the reason I, you know, we have it now or-
I think the first step, I mean, I know you mentioned voting on trees, which isn't, we, we haven't warned any of those, it's not gonna happen. Um, we don't have an agreement. You know, we, we all have gone back and forth, sending paperwork between us. And so at least I don't think either board is in a position-
Oh no, but I think that's, okay.
I thought I heard you saying we're picking improvement in trees today.
Yeah, I mean, we would like to proceed with the trees, but you know, again, like Seaton said, if you don't, you don't.
Yeah, well, and I think this goes into whatever-
We wanna know the type of trees, what size.
We also just have agreements.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Basic, a base agreement.
Um, so we have uh, about twenty minutes left, so I would love to be able to have ten minutes left for sort of anything besides this. So uh, we only have one more question left on here and then any other questions or discussions from the boards. So the last question on the list is, have you reviewed the relevant state, town, village bylaws, ordinances? There's the, what's that big municipal, the big highway, MCUSD? We obviously have, um, here we've got our village monuments memorial policies, we've got zoning bylaws that are being updated. We've got lots of different rules and ordinances and bylaws, which are a lot, it can be very confusing.
No, we have not done everything now.
Okay.
So I think we're, we'll respond to whatever project we're working on and do the research for that, that is relevant to that particular project.
Okay.
Um, and um, that is one of the um, things that we will want to just have conversations with the town manager and DVW. We're not experts, so we need to have some guidance from um, the, the, the bodies as to where we should look and where we should um, get that kind of information from. You know, we've started doing some preliminary uh, conversations with like the, the regional commission to understand how that works with um, E-Trans. But um, again, until we know that we're on the right path, we're not gonna go deep into any of these things. We're not gonna spin wheels without knowing that we have your support.
Well, one of the reasons I bring that up is because there are, and yeah, you don't wanna read through the whole NUTCD that would leave and say it's literally does that. But as you're coming up with concepts about roads or sidewalks or any of those sorts of things, there are so many layers here and, and I think both boards and, and the staff are working on, what do we need to update? Obviously, I said, we've been working through this parking thing for nine months, it's, and it takes a long time. So we are also working with rules from twenty-five or thirty years ago that we might wanna update. You might have suggestions. So as you start doing things and you go, oh my gosh, the, the, the rules for whatever, like it just doesn't work with the way that things are constructed these days. We wanna be able to have the time to have the conversations here and with the public and go, these are the rules of riding a bike in the town. Does that make sense with whatever you're trying to do next? So that's why I'm saying, taking a look at some of those and just knowing what's there so that if you can't do something unless we change ordinances, you gotta give us six to nine months to change the ordinance.
Right, and, and I, I appreciate the, um, you mentioning these things because uh, I think part of what we're looking for in terms of how we work with you is for you all to know that we're here.
Yeah.
And that we're available to help research some of these things that affect the, whatever recommendation comes out. So like, um, personally, I was not aware that you've been working on parking for nine months and I would love to know what you've been talking about, so.
Every month for a nice-
Yeah, yeah, but if you've done actual, you know, uh, discussions about this, anyway, that's, you know, I'm not aware of that. So um, being aware of that is, would be really useful.
Yeah, and that's one of those things, and I think this is something we've talked about in our goals, is our communication with the, the community and making sure that we're getting impact, that we're getting feedback on things because, and again, this is something that we are actively working, but it has to be a partnership with the community is if we are posting and printing and articles and all these sorts of things and we get nine months in and someone says, I didn't know, then like at that point, you know, God bless, Lisa has put in so much time on this for somebody to go, no, it's wrong. Like at some point we have to make a decision. So it, maybe that's something you can help us with, but we have to work and make decisions and we can only handhold and send so many gold leaf invitations out to people to say, hey, you should come be part of the conversation. So if you have ideas on how we can do that, so people are aware, so we jump in early, we're happy to have that. But that's what I'm saying, with these sorts of things, look at them early because if we need to change, that needs to happen early. And if you want input on things, we can only do so much coverage. We, we can always do more, we can always do better. But again, if we get nine months into this or they've been working on a water treatment plant, you have to come in earlier because we can only wait for so long. So that's what I'm saying, please do as much early as you can.
Yeah, yeah, we're definitely trying to do that.
Okay. Um, so we've got about five minutes left before we can take some public comment. Is there anything else, Stuart or trustees?
Yeah.
Good. Well, I was just gonna say to Susan's point, we aren't working on a tree project and I'm curious that like, if we use this, it's a relatively simple project, it's a relatively small thing. It would be helpful for at least me to understand what is the process, like using this as an example, what do we do? So we've identified the spots for the trees, we've identified what we think is a need, because they're just stumps. Um, we're prepared to go out and raise fundraising, we've gotten close, we understand the scope. You know, we have to think about the maintenance, how we're gonna do that, but what do we do? How do we actually?
Talk to the boards.
Yeah.
Get on our, and, you know, again-
That's what we thought.
We've traded documents, we need to have a base agreement between the conservancy and the board. We didn't appoint you.
No, no, absolutely.
It's kind of this board that exists and has fundraisers and, and that we have not a lot of idea of what's going on. So I think-
I think that's the point of today.
Yeah.
This too.
Well, I mean, written agreement.
Yeah, yeah, we, and we have copies and drafts.
Relevant to what you're talking about. Um, you know, those four spots uh, where they have to grow it up, and you're talking about root systems and so forth, destroying sidewalk all around it. Affecting the businesses that are in front of it. The timing of when it's being done, all that has to be wrote down and can be.
Yes.
You know that we do have a budget in the village for tree work as well and maintenance and the wardeness in the village. Um, one thing that's really easy to say, then efficient to say, everything is agreement with the town, agreement with the town, agreement with the town. I'd like to hear it said, agreement with the town and village.
Mean it.
This, this two municipalities. Now, the, so much of what you're doing is in the village.
Primarily in the village.
So, yes, so in agreement, when we, we structure it, please keep that in mind. It's a town and village.
Totally, totally. It's like saying men when we mean men, women.
Yes, exactly. I was bringing up that, that point up, and, and also to applaud what you're doing. We do support it.
Eric, did you have something we've got about two minutes?
No, I know, but um, when we go online, Seth, where, and it's an apple bowl, have it hands up for a lot, so.
If there anything, I wanna make sure we get everything, everything the board needs him to move on with conservancy. Do you guys have anything, trustees, like, or do you have anything else you wanna add or questions you wanna ask while we've got people in the room? Okay.
Almost there.
Um, nobody online. Eric, what, how do you wanna do this next step? So it seems like we need sort of that overall document of some sort.
We're ready to discuss what the next steps will, will be, then again, how we'll structure it, you know? Would be the overall MOU, would be MOU per project, I think some things we've created to flush out internally.
And you guys are really looking for, you wanna go out and start raising money? What it sounds like you guys wanna?
Well, not even raising money, actually, the, the next step for the green is to conduct these public charrettes. So um, that's, you know, what we're, we're envisioning.
Can you use a fifty cent word?
What?
For charrettes.
Design section.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sorry, no, that's okay.
So I, I think the, the goal of today is for the boards to decide, you know, you know, if you do it now, it's not really difficult, but do you want this group to exist kind of as they describe it today? If so, we can put together some letter of support for our bold municipalities, support this group as they exist and then laying out how things would work going forward. We'll probably do the next step if we so inclined.
Okay.
And I can work with that internally.
Yeah, do you wanna?
We're gonna have a lot of great meetings coming up, so.
Yes, we are. Unfortunately, we are.
November sixth, the first project meeting for anyone who's interested at eight fifteen AM.
So, so we're gonna say the next steps are, you all are gonna get involved and start, so taking everything that we went through here, starting writing it up so that you all can start doing stuff.
And I might include, ask included trustees, like, for in the meetings, part of Susan for her background and whether trustees wanna, want to help kind of move it forward.
Also, can, can I just respond? So um, we have drafted, I know Susan's seen, we've drafted um, various versions of MOUs and then more, more recently, we drafted a letter of support for you to consider. Um, and um, the MOU, I- And the M O U is the one that was drafted was just for the design element of the green. And in our conversations with Eric, there was a, an opinion or a suggestion that we have something that's more general so that we don't have to have an M O U each time we do something. So the letter of under, a letter of support is kind of a broader, all encompassing description of how we would work together. It's basically says that, you know, nothing gets done without your authority and approval and that you're kept up to speed on everything and you're the signatory on any contracts. And that was the concern that the trust had about an M O U. That we're a nonprofit and the Conservancy is a project of the trust. So the trust is the fiduciary and the legal entity. And they were, they were concerned that we, we don't have the authority to be the signatory of an M O U and would have to be them. And they're not prepared to engage in any contracts, which is, I think, fine, because it's not appropriate, I think, for for us to do any of the work that happens on the public land. So that's why we kind of went to the letter of support idea, which is just you all stating that you're, you know, in principle, in support of the kinds of work, kind of work that we're going to do. But that does not preclude you approving any particular action. So it's it's just to say that we can, you know, we have this relationship. So I, you know, that's the starting point that you have in possession.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, all of you. I know you've done a tremendous amount of work and this takes a long time to figure out. First one through the wall always, you know, gets hurt, right? So I appreciate. Sorry, Moneyball quote. So I appreciate you guys and really all this work. I know it's a lot and it's, we're figuring it all out. And I appreciate your patience and flexibility with us. There's ten of us. We all have very different opinions. So thank you and.
Do you, do you want to make the public has comments on this first?
Yeah, are there public comments on this? We've got about eight minutes left. Okay, and of course you can. Does he have a comment about the village Conservancy?
I just wanted to commend Wendy Spector for her leadership on this. I worked for New York City Parks for three years in the Commissioner's Office. The the Central Park Conservancy, Bryant Park Conservancy, Riverside Park. We 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 use this model all over New York City. It had a massive effect on the turnaround of the public spaces. And there's lots of examples of agreements, not only in New York, like with the ones that Wendy mentioned with Prospect Alliance, Prospect Park Alliance. But also, you know, in in towns like Houston and and Boston, but there's also smaller towns like Greenville and Bentonville. You know, Greenville, South Carolina and Bentonville, like where there's, there's good models to follow. So you you guys, it it's a great program. Thanks, Wendy. Keep it up.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. Again, we appreciate it. Eric will be your next call.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have about seven minutes left and we have, I think, citizen comments.
Just so people understand, two members of the select board and Eric have to be somewhere else.
So I think. Can you raise your hands if we've got a comment just so we can get a sense of how many people want to speak? We've got one, two, three, I know we've got one or two.
Well, why don't we just get them up and go as well.
Yeah, so I'm going to give everybody.
People can speak. Maybe you can agree amongst each other.
Yeah, so let's, I know Seth had a, had something online, so let's do Seth, Jessica, and then everybody else. Okay, well, let's take.
You want to go? I'll get out of here. I go to work. First of all, I want to commend the board on their consistent focus on infrastructure over the last several years. The development of a capital plan and the focus on economic development. It has been a game changer. I've watched it. I commend you. Thank you. One thing that I think is missing from your consideration right now is the school. When I was the town manager of Killington for six years, where I led economic development also. We were focused on the the growth of the year-round economy and the grand list and improving the quality of life. We had a close partnership between the the school and the town. We recognized that it was a key to attracting families, growing our economy, keeping our property values high and ensuring we had a soul beyond just being a tourist town. Policy decisions considered the impact on the school and and that we attracted new families. Recreation programs were produced in partnership with the school. We plowed its driveway, solicited grants to fund the sidewalk extension, the emergency generator. All kinds of stuff. We even designed and built a new sign for the school to match our wayfinding system. You know, we used it for town meetings and emergency shelter. Anyway, our select board strategic plan confirmed this. I see that it's missing from yours right now and I think it would support a lot of the things that you have in there. So my advocacy here, I I'm here to advocate that you you make supporting the school part of your annual objectives. And also you you consider when you hold bond votes, like in the wastewater case, so that we don't have competing bond measures. I think there's a, I think there's a partnership here and I look forward to meeting with the select board leadership on Friday. Thank you for my, for considering this.
Take one more online and then get into the room. Who's got, I can't, I'm sorry. Kristen Hubble, okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, Al, can you hear me? Yep, okay. My name is Kristen Hubble and I'm a teacher at Woodstock Elementary. My husband Andrew is a firefighter in the town of Woodstock. We both serve this community and know firsthand how much Woodstock stability depends on local jobs. Reliable infrastructure and a strong year-round workforce. I'm asking the select board to partner with our school board to ensure the future of the Woodstock Middle High School remains right here in Woodstock. Specifically, I'm asking if you could endorse the district's efforts or at least represent the district's efforts and our community's future. The town and school really have aligned goals for the future of our community. Right now, there's a real opportunity. State funding for school construction and renovation may soon become available. And if Woodstock acts quickly, we can position ourselves to benefit, keeping taxes manageable while investing in the long-term health of our town. The school building is more than just an educational facility. It's a major driver in our local economy. It's one of our largest year-round employers. Losing that would mean losing dozens of jobs from teachers to nurses, counselors, administrators, paraeducators, custodians, cafeteria workers, maintenance staff, bus drivers. These are people that live in our community, pay taxes and support our local economy. The ripple effect would be far-reaching. Obviously, people would move. There would be fewer students. That means there's fewer people coming to our town each day to buy food, gas, services locally. It would impact elementary schools, our childcare centers, small businesses and organizations that rely on the stability of that our schools bring. Yep, yep, I'm done, but I think all of the goals that I read online are very aligned to the future of our our school and our community and its health.
Thank you. We've got about two minutes left, so if you want to come, if you, if there's anybody in the room, come on up, give us your name and give us your comment.
I also say too, the select board is meeting tomorrow at ten thirty. Talk about the wastewater plants is also be a moment, person's on tomorrow as well, if people can't shoot it up.
And also the chair and vice chair meeting with people from the school.
Come on up, yeah, please. Give us your name and where you live.
I'm Kristen Sullivan. I live on River Street. I graduated from Woodstock Community High School and I have two daughters in the elementary school. This year is a critical year for defining the future of our high school and middle school here. And there are long-term implications for the culture and the economy of this town. And so looking at the goals for this year, I hope that we do have an education-related board. And as Kristen Hubble spoke to, I hope that it does involve working with our, with our school board to define the future of the middle school and high school and we keep that here.
Thank you. Come on up.
My name is Candace Contrato and in twenty twenty, we moved to Vermont, found Woodstock. I love it here. I love the community. I didn't know towns like this existed. Sorry, I'm going to keep this shorter. That being said, I don't think I can send my kids to school twenty to thirty minutes away if the building does not stay in Woodstock. I fully intended to live here my whole life and keep my kids here, but if there's not a school building, I think I'll have to move. And I think a lot of people feel the same way. And I think that it would be devastating to our town. I've seen firsthand what happens to towns in Vermont that lose their community and sense of school. They shutter and there's nothing more sad. So we can, must do everything we can to ensure Woodstock continues to thrive and keep our community. And that starts with protecting our school system that belongs in our town with us. And I really hope that we can all work together because I don't think it's just a separate school issue, a separate town issue. I think it's, and everyone achieve and I hope we can all work together. Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I think a lot of people came today. We ran out of time, so I do apologize. But I'll say again, tomorrow at ten thirty, the select board will be meeting. We'll be public comment at the beginning of the meeting. So there'll be more time. Also, we have, we see some emails from people and in favor of the school, we keep sending emails. Trustee is going to meet on the tenth of November. On November sixth is another budget meeting. So there'll also be plenty of other meetings in the next few weeks where people can come and speak if you can't speak to that.
And and just a reminder to everybody about every subject ever, our emails are all on the website. And people have businesses, people walk dogs, please feel free to stop us or email us or contact us anytime about anything. Or we're not just, we don't just live here, we live in the community, so come see us.
On behalf of the select board, I'm going to adjourn.
So a second?
Second.
Really quick, can I just ask, I've gotten questions whether or not trick-or-treating is weather-dependent for the trustees. Can you just let, let me know and let the folks in the meeting know if if trick-or-treating is still on rain or shine? Okay, that's great. I just gotten, I've gotten a barrage of questions about it, so thanks so much.
I'm making motion for the trustees to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor say.